Good evening, everyone. The November 17th Regular Meeting Number Eight of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the West Potomac High School Chamber Choir under the direction of Ernest Johnson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. (Music) 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 Thank you, all the parents who came to see your beautiful children. What a wonderful performance. We really appreciate your time and coming here today. And Mr. Stork would like to say something as well.
Thank you. And I'm sure if many of you know that Mr. Johnson is an icon at West Potomac and has done a fabulous job of preparing this choir and so many choirs before. And we've all had the pleasure to listen and to learn, as well as to just to take our minds somewhere else while we're listening to some beautiful piece of music. And I thank the choir and the parents who've helped to bring the children here, as well as his direction. It's always been a first-rate performance for all of us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next announcements, a few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. The Board held a closed meeting early this evening and certified compliance immediately upon reconvening in public at the budget work session which preceded tonight's meeting. Dr. Garza is not with us tonight. Instead, we have Dr. Lockard. Thank you. Thank you for sharing your night with us tonight, as you always do, but at the table tonight. If you would like to access tonight's agenda and related meeting documents, you can do so by going to the FCPS website, select School Board, and then on upcoming meetings and agendas. The meeting is also being streamed live on the FCPS website homepage. Click on "Watch School Board Live." If you've signed up to speak before the Board during citizen participation, please turn in 16 copies of your remarks at this time to the deputy clerk sitting in the section to my right, Ms. Goddard. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is also on the table by the auditorium entrance. Please turn off or silence your cell phones, and I will now call on our student representative, Mr. Latif, for announcement.
Thank you. We have one announcement today. We are recognizing National Inclusive School Week on December 1st to the 5th. Inclusive School Week is an annual event sponsored by the Inclusive Schools Network, ISN, and is held each year during the first week in December. This year's theme is "Inclusive Education: One School Community," which spotlights the ideas and contributions of individuals that contribute to a diverse community of learners. Since its inception in 2001, Inclusive School Week has celebrated the progress that schools have made in providing a supportive and quality education to an increasingly diverse student population, including students who are marginalized due to disability, gender, socioeconomic status, cultural heritage, language preference, and other factors. The Week also provides an important opportunity for educators, students, and parents to discuss what else needs to be done in order to ensure that their schools continue to improve their ability to successfully educate all children. We'd also like to welcome Boy Scouts in the audience from Troops 1100 in Burke, Virginia, 893 in Centerville, Virginia, and Troop 55 in Great Falls, Virginia, and they are all working on their citizenship and the community merit badge. If those scouts could please rise.
(Applause) Ms. Schultz?
Just a little shout-out to Troop 893, which is my home troop. Good on ya.
Thank you. Next, we will move to Agenda Item Number Three, and tonight we have a Spotlight on Learning, and I call on Dr. Lockard.
Thank you, Ms. Darnett-Kofax. Good evening, members of the School Board and our community. Tonight's Spotlight will be presented by Gretchen Haslin, Head Librarian at Kilmer Middle School, and Priscill Dando, Coordinator for the Library Information Services. The topic of this presentation is Makerspaces. We're also pleased to have with us this evening Aileen Flaherty, Principal of Camelot Elementary School, Rob James, Principal of Kilmer Middle School, Valerie Jopek, Librarian at Camelot Elementary School, and Scott Seder, Education Specialist for STEAM. Thank you for being here.
My name is Priscill Dando, and I am Coordinator of Library Information Services. And Scott Seder, our STEAM Specialist, and I are very pleased to introduce Gretchen Haslin, who is the Head Librarian at Kilmer Middle School. She's going to provide an orientation to Makerspaces in our Spotlight on Learning.
This year, our school has embarked on a journey to bring Makerspaces into the lives of our students. A Maker Space delivers learning opportunities which allow students to imagine, to create, and to solve problems in a very hands-on way. As you'll see in this video filmed at both Kilmer and Camelot Elementary School, not only do these Makerspaces energize and engage our kids, but also very strongly support the Portrait of a Graduate. Enjoy.
My job is to make sure that the library is an intellectual gymnasium for the school.
The library at Camelot Elementary might look like a gymnasium, a gymnasium of cardboard using electronics and duct tape, a lot of duct tape. That's because in one area, librarian Valerie Jopek has set aside room for Maker Space.
A Maker Space is part of a 21st century movement to get innovation back in the hands of Americans, to let us be thinking with our hands, not so much doing this, but really doing this. There's a strong technical component to it as well, but at the elementary school level, we really think that a Maker Space should be about students engaging in hands-on, messy, inquiry-based learning.
Makerspaces are great for allowing students to make hands-on connections across disciplines. Here, students will collaborate, learn new skills, solve problems, and expand their creativity. Makerspaces often include a variety of technology, but they are not defined by specific equipment.
We have all kinds of materials. All of our materials are donated by members of the community. So, we have a lot of paper towels. We have a lot of odd plastic containers. One of the things that we ask for are the weird packing materials that come in, like this, from boxes that you get. So, if you get a blender, we want the things that came in the box with the blender. And sometimes we get the blenders when they're broken, we take the blades out, but we do actually have a lot of used small appliances that the kids demolish and repurpose.
A lot of learning takes place in the Maker Space, and the lessons can connect directly to school content. Today, boards videos are working on projects reflecting their interpretation of amendments to the Constitution.
Our amendment was the 15th Amendment. The 15th Amendment was, is voting. Our project is basically a voting booth up here. Inside, there is a screen where the person inside of the voting booth is looking at the choices of names.
And so, what we want our students to be able to do at the end of the project, like Rebecca did for us today, is explain that project. She's able to explain the 15th Amendment using a cardboard box and an old Palm PDA. That doesn't look like a voting booth we might see, but it's their imagination and their intent behind those design choices that's so important.
Makerspaces are fun places to learn about science, technology, engineering, art, and math, also called STEAM. The STEAM-related hands-on projects found in Makerspaces benefit older students, too. At Kilmer Middle, a grant paid for 3D printer, and the PTA helps with other donations.
Back there, there were some carrots, and you hold this black wire, and you can touch the different carrots, and they'll make different sounds because we plug them in with the computer. And it's like we're playing the piano or something, but it's really we're touching carrots.
We started this project, kind of planning for it last winter, and then when the Portrait of a Graduate came out this summer, it was fascinating to me what a perfect marriage it is. You know, the other day, I turned to a colleague. We had students who were trying to get a Lego head through a PVC pipe and have it land in a bucket, and they were kind of figuring out the perfect angle for that. And I said to my colleague, "Right there, they are communicating, they are collaborating, they've got a goal set, they are thinking critically about different ways they could do it." And there were all these kind of components of the Portrait of a Graduate that really, I think lots of projects here need.
Kilmer's Maker Spaces are new this school year, and they are just getting started with projects that support the curriculum. Even so, there's a lot of learning going on here.
It's kind of hard to explain because it's not learning like you learn a specific thing. It's kind of you learn how to like group together and work together. It's not that like school type of learning. It's a different type of learning.
Makerspaces provide the material and tools for hands-on lessons that can be applied across multiple disciplines. They align with a STEAM curriculum that helps students gain valuable life lessons.
Every single one of our students can be engaged in learning, and this is, I think, a key way to get some of those harder-to-crack students to really be thoughtful, engaged learners.
You have to try different stuff and do different stuff, and you might fail, but I mean, failing isn't really that bad. I mean, if you were never wrong, then how would you learn what was right? Like, how would you know if you succeeded if you never failed? (Music)
Very fun, very exciting. Would anyone, okay, Ms. Heinz?
Yeah, I think I was one of the ones "wow-ing" up here. It's just great. It seems so simple. You look at the materials, and it's found stuff, and they're answering, you know, fairly simple questions, I guess, as they go through. Well, although I wouldn't have thought to play music on carrots, so, you know, it's very creative. But I think we heard a few really important things in there for learning, that it's a safe space to fail in, and that gets to how well they're collaborating and supporting each other and communicating with each other, that failing is part of the process. We get it. And I hear from, you know, high school principals sometimes that that's something our students don't, they're afraid. By the time they get to high school, they've become afraid to fail, and that's a terrible thing. And the student said it very well, that failing is a part of learning. I loved it when the student said, "It's not school-type of learning." I think I heard a lot of people laughing. Wouldn't it be great if we get to the point where kids understand that that is school-type of learning? That's what we want, right? Exactly. I think when you talked, Ms. Haslin, when you talked on the video about, it's almost like it was a happy accident that this fit the Portrait of a Graduate, in a way. And I mean, I think that's a wonderful thing. And what I hope happens with the Portrait of a Graduate is that we are innovating from the classroom, and from the library, and from the students, and from the teachers, and that we will create, with the Portrait of a Graduate, a framework within which all of that happens naturally. And so, I was really, I just, I want to thank you guys so much. This is awesome.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I just want to reinforce what Ms. Heinz was saying, and what was really emphasized in the video is that trying, trying, and experimenting, and you're going to have some failures on the way, but imagine when you reach that success and how you learn from each one of those. And my son, who's now a senior in high school, when he was doing his physics project for Science Fair last year, they picked a project and it didn't succeed. It failed, and he was terrified of what was going to happen. And the teacher said, "No, that's science. You come up with a hypothesis, you test it, and sometimes the experiment doesn't work, but you're, you know, I want you to try, take those risks, and if you fail, what did you learn from it?" And so, thank you for capturing that this evening and in the work that's being done. I think it very much represents how students will be more excited, more creative, and maybe a little less stressed in their learning process when they realize that innovation is going to require that try, try again. So, thank you.
Ms. Strauss?
Thank you very much. I'm glad we had this opportunity to do the Maker Space because we've heard a lot about that. In this Sunday's New York Times Magazine, which I shared with all my colleagues, there was a great article called "Welcome to the Failure Age." I recommend it to you. It talks about the incredible innovation, risk-taking, entrepreneurship, the failures and successes, but how quick that cycle is today, and it does fit with the, with Maker Space, with Portrait of a Graduate, but it is that experimentation. And I love the quote from the one young girl who said, "Well, if you don't fail, you don't know how to go on." So, look in Sunday's New York Times Magazine, you will feel as though, yes, you have, you've been validated in what you believe in. Thanks.
Mr. Latif?
Just want to add quickly, for those of us who attended the ribbon-cutting at Thomas Jefferson High School's new research wing, not only are we seeing this at the elementary school level, the middle school level, but we also saw these collaborative, open learning spaces where students are encouraged to work together and be creative. So, this is something that's happening at every level of FCPS.
Mr. Velkoff?
You know, not even PD Kubak wrote music for the carrot. That's a first. Last year, Ms. Heinz and I had an opportunity to attend, it was like a Maker Spaces fair at South Lakes High School, and I understand there, this is really kind of a national organization or something. Can you comment on that? Just educate us on sort of what Makerspaces is and what's that, what that's all about?
There is a real kind of maker movement right now. I mean, it's sweeping, you know, the country. You read a lot about it in the professional library literature, not just with school libraries. There are maker labs, Nova Labs in Reston was one of the sponsors of the South Lakes, of the Maker Fair. And it's, you know, people, it just, people really are responding to this, you know, returning to hands-on learning, experimentation. And it's not just kids, it's adults. I mean, you can buy memberships in a lot of these Maker Space labs. And, you know, I mean, I think it's just, it's something that really speaks to what we need. Maybe we've all been sitting in front of our computers for too long and in front of our smartphones, although, you know, a lot of this, you know, there's a lot of coding and programming that we can use in Makerspaces as well. So, I think it is a national movement, and it's written up a lot. There was an article, I think it was in Parade a couple weeks ago, about, you know, 3D-printed hands and how 3D printing is pretty incredible. We're working on being part of a project at Kilmer to print 3D prosthetic hands on a volunteer basis for people who need them. So, I mean, I just, I just think, I think the maker movement really is speaking to a lot of us in the kinds of things, you know, how we want to do, we want to create, and we want to build things and be part of something.
And you jarred my memory when Ms. Heinz and I were going around, Robert E. Smith, Simon, excuse me, who celebrated his 100th birthday around then, he was just entranced by everything that was there. So, it really is stuff for everybody. Thanks.
Ms. Reed?
Thank you. How exciting. I can just tell by looking at you that you enjoy it as much as the kids do. It's terrific. I wonder how this relates to the curriculum. In other words, is it something that is part of a certain, you know, part of the curriculum? Or how does that work with what's already been established? Do you just take an aspect and kind of say, "Okay, this we're going to do by hands-on learning," or is it over and above what is being taught in the various subjects? Can you just tell us a little bit about how that, how it works?
I think it can happen in a lot of different ways, and we have just started our Maker Space at Kilmer, and we've done a couple of curriculum tie-ins. We've worked with English Language Arts. They, you know, they've made some, you know, Lego book projects and some stop-motion videos to represent a book they've read. We are collaborating with our math department, which is not something we get to do a whole lot in the library, so it's really exciting to do a big problem-solving unit where the kids come in and solve lots of different problems. We also have Maker Space activities during our extended learning time and after school so that kids have a lot of free choice during those times that are educational but not as curriculum-driven. So, that's kind of where we are right now. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. And I guess as a follow-up then, how can we expand this kind of learning to other schools beyond the two tonight from the Providence District? How do we, aside from, you know, joining, you mentioned there's some kind of membership, but is this something that you could envision that really any of our schools could do? What do you need to get started, I guess, is my question?
I think, I mean, I think you need people who are interested and willing. I mean, I saw a presentation that Valerie did last January, and she was the one who inspired me to really get started, to show me that I could do it. So, I think those of us who are doing it need to be voices in our community and, you know, show people that it isn't, you know, you don't have to start with everything all at once. You can begin with smaller projects, and we do have, we do have schools in Fairfax County who are doing kind of maker-type projects without having a whole Maker Space. We have a lot of support from Priscill and Scott, you know, in the libraries and as STEAM Coordinator. So, I, you know, I just think we all have to talk about it, and I think our energy and the energy of our kids, and once they see our students and how they're responding, I think it will spread because it's where, you know, we all want to be, I think, even though we don't know it yet.
Right. So, anybody out there that has a question about what do we mean by this 21st century learning? This is it. Thank you very much. Very exciting.
Dr. Lockard?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you for the energy and excitement that's gone into that. One of the things that I noticed watching that video was the high level of engagement. Every student was happy and excited to be working on those projects. And I think about the connection to concepts. You know, it's one thing, students are sitting in a class, listening to concepts being taught or hearing it. It's another when they're, they have their hands on it. They're making an interpretation of it, a model of it. They're going to remember it so much, so much better in terms of when they build it, see it, have to explain it to their peers. Also, in terms of the problem-solving component, some real open-ended problems without visible solutions can be explored in a setting like that where students, as we saw, were exploring different solutions, trial and error. It promotes working with a partner or a team, collaborating, communicating. So, there's all those skills that we've been talking about. So, thank you again.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming. (Applause) Our next order of business is citizen participation. Fairfax County citizens who would like to address the School Board should arrange to be placed on the speakers list by signing up online at www.fcpse.edu or by calling the School Board office at 571-423-1075. If the concern is a group concern, please consider appointing a spokesperson, and while the spokesperson is speaking, those in support may stand to show their support. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries, or personal attacks on any person. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should not be raised at public meetings, and such concerns should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Citizens are encouraged to write the School Board on any school-related topic. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes and provide at least 16 copies of their presentation for distribution to the Board. Tonight, five citizens have signed up to address the Board. They include Rasil Abuta, Steve Greenberg, George Pacera, Kimberly Adams, and Rashina Hyzer. Ms. Abuta? Not here? All right. Mr. Greenberg?
Dr. Lockard, Chairman Darnett-Kofax, STEAM School Board members, renowned Mr. Latif. I am Steve Greenberg, President of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers. I represent educators who care. I'll be speaking tonight on 3.01 Spotlight on Learning Maker Space. I'll address that item, the November 3 Professional Development Webinar, Accountability for Those Who are Not Meeting Our Students and Teachers' Needs. All of these topics are interrelated and connected. So, first of all, I'm going to start in regards to the Professional Development Webinar on November 3. I'd like to thank all of our teachers, my members who contacted me and wrote to the School Board members, those who completed the post-webinar survey, the School Board members who contacted me, Dr. Garza and her staff, everyone who worked together insanely listened to the concerns from the webinar, and then worked together to resolve the issue. The fact that Dr. Garza addressed the Professional Development issues immediately with teacher reps at the STAC meeting two days after it occurred, followed by a follow-up email to all affected employees by Dr. Presidio and Instructional Services within a week, reviewing what was learned from the employee feedback, including what went well, what needed to be changed, and certainly reflected that the administration is responsive and cares about the employees' opinions about Professional Development. As FCFT was the only employee organization who has not yet formally sent out any snotty letters all over the workplace on this, or decided to pile on at this microphone, I thought it important to come to you tonight, after we have worked with you to fix the problem, to come and thank you for being professional and caring about your educators' concerns. In regards to our Spotlight tonight, I knew that Ms. Haslin would do a great job describing how the Maker Space concept supports our strategic plan in Portrait of a Graduate, as she's the expert in the school who can provide the best perspective. Her work is her passion. Your educators are really excited to help with the portrait work. We simply ask that you involve us fully and do it soon. We are ready for the specifics. We are ready to tell you what we need to support this Board's goals. We're looking forward to more information soon on the teacher-focused groups for portrait and the budget work, as Dr. Garza mentioned, at the STAC meetings. Please let us know when we can come and engage further. We will help you make this wonderful for our students. I studied the strategic plan items from your work session last Thursday. Creative programs to implement portrait work and needed diversity and resiliency training for our employees must be supported by the time for our teachers to do that and by taking something off the plate before we add on more, as Ms. Heinz often reminds us. For me tonight, I want to share in your excitement over the wonderful changes we may be able to make through Portrait of a Graduate, but only if our schools are properly funded. I realize you're getting ready to do a compensation study, one which will provide you with information on what HR supports are needed to implement portrait effectively, but I'm going to save you some time on that tonight. Look at this most recent Wavy Guide. Study this. We are almost at the bottom. Yeah, I know, Mr. Latif, calm down. Look where our Fairfax teacher salaries are. How are we going to retain the best teachers for our kids? How are we going to attract quality minority candidates to work with our students? This is an embarrassment to our community. This reflects a devaluing of our children and a disregard for our community. of our children and a disregard for our community. I hope you know that I don't care if you're on an election-year supervisors. You will be held accountable for this. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Greenberg. Mr. Pacera?
Good evening, School Board members. Deputy Superintendent Lockard, sorry that I, I was going to talk on the school board policies and I know I should be probably last on the list, so I wanted to talk about other things. First of all, I'd like to talk about the strategic plan work session that you had the other night. It's a, it's a, it's a start. I know there's a couple more months in the process. I'm glad to hear from Ms. Darnett Kofax and from other board members that the timeline was just tentative and it could be moved around, talked around about, and not finalized in the two months. Some of my analysis on your, your breakout sessions, I applaud the efforts or the comments from a lot of the board members. Ms. Hines, in terms of the student achievement gap, where are the strategies in the strategic plan and where are they clearly stated? Ms. Darnett Kofax, again, bringing up the timeline. And more importantly, I think we talked about that, what I think a lot of community members are concerned about is the action plans underneath all these. You know, what is it actually consists of? What is the meat behind it afterwards? And I know in these two months, it's going to take time to actually, and, and further months afterwards to where we at with that. Ms. McGlocklin and Ms. Schultz talking about APIB. Where is this, as a measure, how does this, what does this tell us? You know, that a kid is taking one class, an APIB. Ms. Strauss, in terms of equity or standards level service across that you had mentioned for all the county. I applaud that with the diversity that you have between the Herndon area and maybe other parts of your county. Mr. Latif, I know you mentioned, I know you couldn't be there, you obviously a senior and very busy, your senior year in college in preparation. I know you said the other day that later start time was probably your biggest, will be probably your biggest achievement that you will have during your tenure this year. I would say that the strategic plan is probably bigger. So, I hope you keep that in mind and come, and I know you will come to, to the following sessions. And also, I think the students' voice involved into that, too. In terms of, Dr. Garza, saw a true leader there, educator. Her group was kind of, you know, had more superpower in that educational brain that she has. And I heard a lot of good things of how she's leading our county. And hope good things will come out with the strategic plan and also in the tenure and the years to follow. Other, other things is coming up, the strategic budgeting, the joint budget review next Tuesday that you guys, with the board of supervisors and your staff and you all, will, will look at the aspect of hopefully if the joint budget, the strategic budgeting, and look at the skip, the successful children youth policy team, not as maybe a template, maybe an exercise as an option to further issues down the road. And I think that's a good start in terms of the school readiness. And, and also to end on, on that note, with the two fiscal years aspect, obviously, that's a big item. That's going to be especially for next year. Hopefully, have a good grounded start this year and for next year. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Adams?
Good evening, Chairman Darnett Kofax, members of the board, and Dr. Lockard. My name is Kimberly Adams and I represent the Fairfax Education Association. During this American Education Week, I stand here primarily to say thank you to all of the people who work together to make our public education a success. Our teacher members who work tirelessly keeping students engaged. Our instructional assistants who help each student with the individual attention they need to succeed. Bus drivers and attendants who make it possible for our students to get to and from school safely every day. Our food service workers who keep our children healthy and well-fed so they can focus every day. Our custodial and maintenance staff who keep our buildings in working order so that our students and employees can thrive in a safe and clean environment. And also to you, our school board and administrators, who keep Fairfax a world-class school system even as our student population increases and funding fails to keep pace. Special thanks this evening to those in the Makerspaces program and all the employees at the forefront of creativity and education. This type of creativity in all of its forms across our district inspire our students and our staff to new heights. And I'm proud to be part of that movement. Happy American Education Week to everyone.
Thank you. And finally, Rachna Heiser?
Go ahead and start when you're ready. Thanks. Hi, my name is Rachna Heiser and I'm here as a parent of two children in Fairfax County schools, one of whom has a 504 plan and one of whom has an IEP. I'm coming to talk to you about your secondary course offerings. On the eve of Inclusive Schools Week, as we're approaching it, what I want to talk to you about is as you're approving new secondary course offerings, I want you to keep in mind the needs of special needs students when developing and approving these secondary course offerings. The two things I want to focus on are the, considering the inclusion of students with disabilities in electives and academy classes, which is not very much considered. The new course offerings you're talking about, I understand some of those will be academy classes and some will be at different schools. I also would like you to consider that new classes should be developed with the thought of how to simultaneously fulfill student goal achievement one and student goal achievement two. Your document on the school board says the new course offerings are to fulfill student goal achievement one. You can't really fulfill academic standards without talking about life skills, social skills, and the requirements of executive function that is needed to learn those academic standards. You need to talk about them both together. All right. So, we need, in Fairfax County, to be an ability-focused school. And by not considering how to fully include our students with disabilities within the broader range of classes, we limit them to only working on their disability rather than working on their disability and focusing on any potential abilities they may have. We all have disabilities. We all have abilities. And it is not fair to only focus on the disabilities of those students who are quote-unquote "special needs" students. All right? By only focusing on their disability, you actually reduce the chances for them to gain lawful, I mean, sorry, gainful employment, which is part of student goal achievement one. Prepare students for gainful employment. But, student goal achievement one focuses only on academic core subjects. It does not focus on electives. We recognize that by giving greater opportunity to students with disabilities to be included in electives such as music programs, art programs, tech programs, you actually give them a chance to build on their skills. For example, my son, who can barely maintain academic standards, is a gifted musician. A robust music program for him in high school would help him be the first child with autism at the Berklee School of Music, but he does not have access to that due to lack of support systematically implemented through the county to provide disability support to students in electives and in academy courses. Parents with children with disabilities aren't even told about academy courses as options. Parents with children with disabilities are routinely told that they cannot have accommodations and support for their children to access general ed electives. And there is no adaptive curriculum for electives, arts, technology, social sciences. There's no adaptive curriculum for students with disabilities, and that is a failure on the part of Fairfax County. I hope you will consider this when approving new secondary school courses. There's a lot more in my paper. I hope you take the time to read it. Thank you for all your hard work. I truly do appreciate it. My children appreciate it. Have a great night.
Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it. Next on the agenda is Student Representative Matters. I call again on Mr. Latif.
Thank you. Chairman Darnett Kofax, Dr. Lockard, members of the school board. Before I start, I would like to recognize Mr. Michael Marrow of Centerville High School. He is a junior at Centerville and was elected the president of the FCPS Student Advisory Council back in October. Mr. Marrow will lead the SAC at their monthly meetings throughout the school year. On November 8, I attended the Fairfax County Council of PTA's Emerging Minority Leaders Conference along with Chairman Darnett Kofax, Ms. Hines, and Mr. Stork. It was a fascinating morning filled with great speakers, including several from FCPS. I would like to thank the president of the Fairfax County Council of PTA's, Ms. Debbie Kilpatrick, for the invitation. And I'd like to thank Mr. Steve Greenberg of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers for sponsoring the attendance of one of my student appointees to the Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee, Ms. Julia Rodriguez of Falls Church High School. On November 10, I attended the school board's all-day work session and I got an insight into how FCPS is preparing to meet the needs of a steadily growing student population. Later that week, I met with the Student Advisory Council at Robinson Secondary where we discussed FCPS's use of social media and how it could be improved. We meet again on December the 11, again at Robinson, and we're set to be having our annual food tasting, which should be interesting to say the least. This past Friday, I attended the ribbon-cutting at Thomas Jefferson High School's new research wing. I toured labs dedicated to everything from neuroscience to oceanography, and each featured plenty of new and state-of-the-art technology that I trust the students at Thomas Jefferson will make good use of. On the topic of renovations, I'm very happy to see the Langley High School renovation contract being awarded by the school board this evening. I'm looking forward to returning a few years down the road to see a beautiful and much-needed new school. On November 13, on the November 13, I had the pleasure of attending the world premiere of the National Geographic Channel's new and groundbreaking documentary, Sleepless in America, along with Ms. Evans and Ms. Phyllis Payne at the Reagan Building in downtown DC. Sleepless in America, quote, "exposes the crucial need for sleep and the shocking, life-threatening consequences of its absence." Sleepless in America also follows the morning routines of Aaron Cooper, a student at Oakton High School, and my good friend Amin Al-Dali, who is a junior at Langley High School. Our very own Dr. Garza is also featured, along with the school board's decision to approve the Blue for Change last month. Overall, FCPS was very well-represented, and I encourage everyone to tune in and watch Sleepless in America, which will be broadcast on the National Geographic Channel on November 30 at 8:00 PM. Looking ahead, I'm very excited to connect with other student reps this Thursday at the Virginia School Board Association's Student Rep Annual Workshop being held down in Williamsburg. And as always, more information can be found in my newsletter, more information about the dates of my school visits, and other informational items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latif. Next, agenda item 4.01, Secondary Course Offerings. I call on Ms. Evans for a motion.
Thank you. I move that the school board approve changes to the list of middle and high school course offerings for the 2015-16 school year as recommended by the Course Review Committee and as detailed in the agenda item.
Second?
Second.
And Mr. Moon? All right. Ms. Evans, would you like to speak on your motion?
I would. I had asked that this be taken off of the consent agenda, just so I could say a few words about the addition of Vietnamese one, the Vietnamese one language course to be added at Falls Church High School next fall. It's worth highlighting this addition for a couple of reasons. This will not only be the first Vietnamese language course in Fairfax County, but in the state of Virginia. So, this is quite a milestone. Adding this course will bring our high school languages up to, up to 12, I believe. We had 11 before now and we will have 12. Advocacy for adding a Vietnamese language course was first brought to me at a community, one of my community office hours. And when this idea was raised with Falls Church High School, the entire school community embraced and supported this idea and started to advocate to add this to the course selection, the principal, staff, teachers, students, and as well as Cluster Assistant Superintendent Jim Caker, who left us just a couple of months ago. Advocacy, I want to commend and congratulate everybody who was involved in this. And I do want to name a few people because there was a lot of time and work that went into, to getting this done. Kudos to Sloan Presidio, Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services and his staff, especially Noel Klemenko, Coordinator for Secondary School Support, and Gregory Jones, Coordinator of World Languages, as well as Teddy Praderas, our former Director of Language Acquisition. And both Principal, Falls Church High School Principal Mike Yeo and former Principal Kathy Benner and their staffs have been enthusiastic supporters and advocates, as well as Mr. Caker, and all worked very hard with the Virginia Department of Education to create and add a Vietnamese licensure pathway and Vietnamese course codes for levels one to four. A special thank you to Jenny Nguyen, President of Voice of Vietnamese Americans, to the Vietnamese Youth Education Association, and to other members of the Vietnamese-American community for their ardent advocacy for this. So, adding this course will hopefully be a model for others throughout the state of Virginia, and I am very pleased and excited about this new course offering. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Mr. Moon, would you like to speak?
Just briefly, and I do probably have a couple of questions to ask of the staff. I'm so happy to see that we are able to offer another, a world language to a, you know, high school students here, that is a strong advocate for the needs to teach in both foreign language programs to our students, that I'm really happy to see the first, you know, Vietnamese language program in Fairfax County. And of course, in the Congress of Virginia, to be in Fairfax County as well. That this has obviously taken a long time to get to this point. Probably, as I recall, you know, Ms. Evans, has taken about three years' work. And I, I thank you for closely, you know, following. I've been paying closer attention myself to this and very happy to see this. My question to, I guess, since Dr. Presidio is not here, I'm going to be asking Dr. Lockard, all right, that, so this is an optional course, meaning that this is only available at the Falls Church High School, not at the other high schools, correct?
Correct. And I'm going to look to Dr. Dockery, who talked with Dr. Presidio today as well.
Sure. Dr. Dockery, is that correct?
That is correct. At this time, it would be only be available at Falls Church High School. We would use some of the other methods we use for, if there were individual students. We do that through virtual places to make sure that students could get access. But at this time, to add a new course, you must have 60 students at the school who would enroll. And so, that's where we start, and then we look at the need in other places.
So, when you say 60 students, does that mean 60 students in the beginner class or 60 students altogether?
60 students altogether.
So, it could be Level 1 or it could be Level 4, or AP level, if there is an AP level for any language class. So, even though this is an optional class at Falls Church for the first time in September of next year, if there are other high schools where there enough interest is shown in Vietnamese language class, they could ask this to be added at their schools. Is that...
For any high school, you can do that. But you also, with single people or smaller groups that are interested, we have different kinds of access into the class as well.
And I would like to ask a question or two regarding a Korean language class that is being offered at Fairfax Academy. My recollection is that a little bit more than 10 years ago, that began as a pilot class at Fairfax High School, not academy. And then, after about three years of time, that became a academy, as opposed to now, it's not even an optional class. Is that your understanding as well?
Uh, optional, what, what, the question you're asking is what is the difference between an academy and a general course offering?
I'm trying to find if there are other high schools where there are sufficient number of students who may want to take, you know, Korean language class, not through a, a online course. I know the online opportunities are available. Whether there is a way for other high schools to start the Korean language program.
So, for any, a maximum number of 60 students is considered essential to, in the courses in the upper level to maintain an enrollment. And if a high school identifies that capacity, then that can be considered as well.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Ms. Evans, would you like to comment? You had a comment.
I just wanted to correct the number. I was right the first time. This brings us up to 11 languages.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Next, Ms. Schultz.
Yes, just as a segue to my later individual board comments, this past week, we had our first Student Town Hall of this school year, something that I did last year. Ms. McGlocklin and I were at Robinson Secondary. And I just want to convey, because it'll take time to disaggregate some of the comments and then provide feedback, but one of the comments on, on this language issue that came through pretty clear from the students were the difference, the need for differentiation in the secondary classes for students who are pursuing language very seriously. And, you know, some of our students are, as, in their words, some of our students are pursuing this requirement because it's a graduation requirement and they're checking a block. But there are other students who are seeking to pursue multilingual studies for Homeland Defense or other career choices in college, and that they feel that there is not enough differentiation. So, I hope as we go forward, in addition to some of the comments that were made publicly tonight by audience members, that we continue to con- tonight by audience members, that we continue to consider a need for, not just differentiation across different languages, but for the students who really are pursuing something other than just checking a block, a graduation requirement, that those higher-level mastery classes for the students who are seeking that, you know, not just in the maths and sciences, which we're maybe a little better at doing, but in the languages as well, and what may be necessary in order to do that.
If I could comment just quickly on that, we do know that as students, as we've expanded our elementary offerings, that students are hitting the beginning levels of 7th grade language at a higher proficiency than some just starting. And so we are having to look at higher proficiency for a greater expansion of their language skills.
Mr. McElveen.
I would like to join the chorus in thanking School Board Member Evans for her advocacy over the past several years for this, because it was dogged work, and we do appreciate you doing this, not only to express the board's desire for increased language offerings in our system, but also on behalf of those immigrants in our system who might not always feel included and part of our system. And, you know, that's something we always have to be cognizant of. This board is not always as welcoming as it could be. And a great thing about this is that many colleges, many states in the United States do not offer this course. So we are truly being leaders, and I'm glad that you have kept us as a leader in this field.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I just wanted to share a different perspective from this board member, that I am very proud of the 12 of us for continuing to speak to the value of the richness and the diversity of Fairfax County, and that I think our community should feel very reassured that this board understands that we are a dynamic community, and we will continue to speak in support of that and to take actions that allow us to continue to be continuously improve in being a great county and a great school system.
All right. The motion on the table is, "I move that the school board approve the changes to the list of middle and high school course offerings for the 2015-2016 school year as recommended by the Course Review Committee and is detailed in the Agenda Item." All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you all. Tonight, there are no confirmation items from closed meetings, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through board committee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to ensure that an extensive and thorough review has been made. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 5.01, approve the minutes of the November 6, 2014 Regular School Board Meeting. 5.02, confirm the separations for the period beginning October 1, 2014, and ending October 31, 2014, as detailed in the Agenda Item. 5.03, adopt Policy 5225, responsibilities for students' personal property, as detailed in the Agenda Item. 5.04, A, adopt the resolution approving the 2015 sale of school bonds, and B, authorize the chairman or vice chairman, with the advice of legal counsel for the school division, to negotiate, execute, and administer the school board tax certificate and all of the documents as are deemed appropriate and advisable, and to do all things necessary to complete the transaction contemplated by the resolution as detailed in the Agenda Item. 5.05, award a contract for the Langley High School renovation project to Dustin Construction Incorporated in the amount of $59,772,000, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.06, appoint individuals to serve on the committees as detailed in the Agenda Item. Is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. We have some fans in the audience.
Mr. Latif wanted to vote, but I wouldn't let him in violation of state code.
Can we just make one exception? I get one exception per year. Isn't that in the code?
I'm waiting for my computer to load up. And next is Superintendent Matters, Dr. Lockard.
Couple things to share this evening. FCPS has received six awards from the Chesapeake Chapter of the National School Public Relations Association, CHESPRA, for publications, web, and television communications produced during the 2013-14 school year. We're very proud of our communications group. The following publications and electronic communications received awards of excellence, which is the highest recognition, A Citizen's Guide to Understanding the Budget, print financial information category, and Schools of Yesteryear, the video production program category. I think that was running in the closed-session meeting room this evening, on the TV back there. The following publications and electronic communications received awards of merit, and that would be the Bottom Line E-Newsletter, web publication category, My FCPS Community E-Newsletter, in the web publication category, My FCPS Employees E-Newsletter, also in the web publication category, and My FCPS Family E-Newsletter, also the web publication category. Congratulations to our Television Communications Group for those awards and recognition. The Virginia Department of Transportation awarded a Safe Routes to School grant to FCPS. The goal of the program is to educate students on the benefits of walking and biking to school. The program coordinator, Sally Smallwood, has met with more than 4,600 students, parents, and staff members so far. I did see a lot of tweets about the walking to school initiative that was happening a few weeks back, so I know there were a lot of schools taking advantage of that. One of the grant initiatives is that we purchased 15 bicycles, which were delivered to Island Creek Elementary School. Sally is also a certified bike instructor, so she was able to work with PE teachers to help improve students' biking skills. She plans to take the bikes to a number of different schools to work with students. And in addition, we had a nearly one-third increase in the number of schools that participated in the International Walk to School Day, so a big uptick there. FCPS has installed bike racks to schools and has worked with the Fairfax County to fund sidewalks, trails, and other pedestrian improvements to go along with that initiative, so congratulations. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Next on our Agenda Item Air, Board Reports, and I will first call on Ms. Schultz to talk about the Public Engagement Meeting held on November 10th.
So on November 10th, we had a public engagement, we were doing work session or committee meeting. Madam Chair.
Committee meeting.
So on our committee meeting, we had some comprehensive discussions about our education summit, and we were very, I'm very proud to announce that we had a huge return on the appreciation from the attendees. I believe that 89% said that they favored what we did at the education summit and look forward to coming to another one. We continue to look forward to ways that we can expand both getting a sponsor earlier so that we can solidify our communications into the public and expand future education summits, if that's what we choose to do. We also discussed upcoming board work on budget and said that we were going to push that off until December, until Ms. Reed and the rest of the board finished work on the budget, before we engage on a budget discussion publicly, and whether or not we're going to include any materials that we're going to post out to the public.
Thank you so much. Next for our work session, we'll start with Ms. Evans reporting on governance.
Could you come back to me?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Let's talk about, well, Mr. Moon, let's go do audit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On November 10th, we had an audit committee work session as a part of full-day work session. There were three topics we discussed. First one was hiring process of Audit General, and we made a decision on how to do it, and will soon be advertised, and I think we have already advertised the position. And secondly, we discussed the term of the appointment for the audit committee members, whether that should be extended to two-year term from current one-year term, but the board's consensus was not to extend it to two-year term. The third item is, which will come up as a new business item, and then to be voted at the following meeting, which will be at the second meeting in December, will be adding two committee members to audit committee.
Thank you so much. Next, Mr. Stork, could you speak to the portion of the work session that you worked on with operational expectations and facilities?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We, at the work session, we discussed two major, we led two major discussions. One was on the operational expectations, on the financial operational expectations, and made a number of reviews of what staff presented to us and comments related to that. There probably isn't much to add to that. It's, the actual expectation is on the Agenda Item, and people are welcome to take a look, and please give us your feedback. With respect to facilities, we spent a great deal of time on that, almost three hours, and most of that conversation was about work that facilities has been doing, and really where our excess capacity is, where we are heavily over-enrolled, and what we need to do about it. Additionally, they spent time talking about a new, actually consultant that they've hired to look at our projection process and try to improve the way that we assess projections, not only county-wide, which we do a fairly good job of, but more specifically on a school-by-school basis where it's far more difficult, and where demographic information, if it's finer and more finite, more detailed, we can probably do a better job. And so they have a consultant looking at that. They're going to be revising our existing process over the course of the next few months, and we look forward to hearing more from them. Additionally, we looked at a particular part of, which was Richmond Highway Corridor, and frankly, the overcrowding there, and different options, along with, again, some other parts of the county, different options for addressing that overcrowding. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Evans.
Thank you. We worked on three things. We decided that we would put the charge to, the draft charge to the audit committee on the next, the agenda at the December meetings. The Governance Committee had taken a look at that and had a proposal. We didn't have much of a discussion at the work session, so that's going to be up for approval next month. We did just go ahead and approve the change to the technology operational expectation, adding a measurement on security breaches, and that report will come to us in closed meeting because of the nature of the issue. And lastly, we decided that school board members, if they would like to have the Strength Finders book on leadership and have some one-on-one consultation on that, that they would have that available to them.
Thank you. And Ms. Schultz, if you could speak now to the session of public engagement that was held at the work session.
So the primary thing that we spent our time talking about was something this board's been working on, especially public engagement, for a period of time, which is a faith community outreach breakfast. And we, as a board, voted to have that on December 2nd. We worked comprehensively with the county to get an extensive list of faith community groups and leaders, and that invitation has been sent to have largely a coffee and a meet-and-greet to show them maps of our regions and our schools, and work with staff and we, as board members, to begin a conversation about, you know, obviously, a dynamic set of needs of our children and our families and our community, and how we can work collaboratively together. In addition, we had, again, the Budget Communications Plan. We were going to defer, to some degree, to the rest of the work of the budget chair and vice chair and the board, and we were going to reconsider that on our December agenda for what we may need to put together in terms of suggestions to the board. If you guys would like us to put together a plan for you to go into your respective regions and deliver topics, we are going to receive working notes for ourselves, from staff, but whether or not we need to develop anything for the public. And then we did the debrief of the education summit that I mentioned earlier in the comments from the committee meeting.
I see that we're missing one Agenda Item, and there are three. This is a joint committee, which we have. There are three board members. Tonight, I will ask Ms. McLaughlin to speak on the skip committee, and we can then rotate our comments between the three board members as we report out on this.
Well, as the other meeting manager with Mr. Stork, I'm happy to certainly highlight what was presented at that work session. As noted, the Successful Children and Youth Policy Team is a joint collaboration involving both county and school staff. And we received a wonderful overview and briefing from Dr. Dockery and Dr. Marian Pennarelli, who talked about what the focus and the work have been in the last 18 months or so. And just to highlight issues such as early childhood and school readiness, the disproportionality and disparity team and the work they're doing, the Behavioral Health for Youth team, and also Opportunity Neighborhoods, which is taking place in the Mount Vernon area, looking at cradle-to-college-to-career efforts to ensure success for children in that community. And then they touched upon, not just the work, but some recommendations that are coming out of those joint committee works that are being done by county and school staff. And so from that overview, the board will then also receive another briefing at the December work session on some additional work that the board supervisors and the school board are considering with respect to equity in our communities. And so I'm excited about the work that's being done to date. I want to express my appreciation to my colleague, Pat Hines, and Jane Strauss, who work with me on Skip, along with the supervisors, Jeff McKay and Catherine Hudgens. I think this is a model for what we're trying to do with this joint collaboration in the services we provide citizens in our community.
Ms. Hines would like to make a comment.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, for wrapping up what we did at our work session. I wonder, though, this is a time when we report on our committee meetings as well, right? So, I mean, I was not at the November 12 meeting of Skip, but Mrs. Strauss sent us all the minutes from that meeting, which I think is great. I think it's important that our board, all of us, keep track of what Skip is talking about. So I thought, and Ms. Strauss, if you want to chime in, and we don't necessarily have to have a three-person report every time, maybe we can get into a better habit about this, but from reading the minutes, it looks like Skip talked about the Northern Virginia Suicide Prevention Plan at its last meeting, and the report of the Governor's Task Force on mental health as well, and then spent quite a bit of time talking about the importance of shared and unifying community-level goals on behalf of children that would rise to the policy level with both boards, if you wanted to add anything to that sort of description of the last meeting. Is that good? All right, thank you.
Thank you all. Next, we will go to the November 13 meeting. Mr. Velkoff was the meeting manager for the strategic plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we met as a board to see the latest work from staff on the strategic plan. You may recall that in July, at the retreat, we identified four key goal areas, having to do with resources, academics, caring culture, and premier workforce. And what the staff presented... And what the staff presented to us on Thursday was some refinement around each one of those areas, a number of strategies, and so forth. So what we did is we broke into groups, and we, each of the four topics was represented by a champion from the leadership team, and we went around and gave feedback on what we all thought we were seeing. And it was actually, there was a lot of discussion. I think there was a lot learned on both sides of the discussion, and agreement that there would still need to be further discussion. So I know that, Madam Chairman, that you're planning to have us get together again and kind of go through the next steps on that. I think what I'm being a little circuitous about is that we realized that we might have to slow down the pace at which we roll this out, because I think we needed at least another iteration with the Board.
All right, and to show how much we're meeting, we left off another one, CPDC, Mr. McElveen.
Thank you, Chairman Kofax. So, for the first time in two and a half years, the CPDC convened, and it was quite productive. We took up the issue that was brought forward at the Board Forum on July 27th to adopt a charter for FPAC. We made some edits to the proposed charter, and we will be bringing those to the Board within the next month or so. And CPDC plans to convene again on December 4th.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Reed, talking about our budget session earlier tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we convened to discuss several things. We discussed the fiscal forecast presentation that we'll be sharing with the Board of Supervisors on November 25th. This forecast was originally shared with us in September, and also at our Joint Budget Development Committee meeting. We also received a briefing on the Joint Budget Development Committee final report that is in draft form now. The recommendations include action plans to improve the budget process, identify opportunities for smart savings, improve financial management, and establish shared vision, priorities, and goals. The summary document will be shared at our meeting when we meet with the Board of Supervisors, excuse me. And at that point, we will then go back, the two Boards will go back, and have plenty of opportunities to discuss the recommendations and outcomes, and then take an individual action of accepting the report. So, just wanted to remind my colleagues that there'll be plenty of times to have further discussions about the Joint Budget Development Committee work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Next on the agenda is Board Matters, and I will start with Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was happy to attend the Easter, the third of Easter parent nights at Mount Vernon High School last week on Wednesday. I have actually had attended all three Easter parent nights this year, starting from Stewart High School, the second one is Chantilly, and the third one is Mount Vernon High School. And I was easily able to see hard work that went into, you know, setting up all those breakout sessions and hard work done by our staff, and I thank you for what they have done. But I have also noticed one thing, though, compared to prior years, because I had been going to all these Easter parent nights over the years, that this year's attendance seems to be a little lower than prior years. And I was wondering whether it was just I feeling it that way, or staff also feels the same way? And if the attendance was lower this year, whether staff is going to look into that to see what has happened.
So I can comment on that, Mr. Moon. Your eyes did not deceive you. The attendance for 2012, because it's done every other year, to 2014 was down by approximately 200 adults and about 250 students. So the total combined in 2012 was about 1675, and this year, 1189, so down by 500 across. We do know that we use different mechanisms for advertising. We had mailed out some things centrally in the past, and that was very expensive. We used sending flyers in all seven languages to all ESOL teachers, and so that is something that we're going to look at as we consider. We also, one of the things I talked about with Mr. Presidio and Rich Polio is that we know that some of our schools are also doing more at the site, and so there may not be the same need centrally, but those are all speculations that we would want to investigate.
Thank you.
Ms. Reed?
Thank you. I attended the TJ ribbon-cutting this week, as did several of my colleagues. It was very exciting. I agree that there is just, you just can't even believe the kinds of things that are going on there. They did say that the laboratories were of university-level quality. So it was just very impressive and exciting. I'm not sure that I can repeat all the things that they were talking about, but it sure sounded like it was really very, very impressive. The McLean Citizens Association are having their centennial program, and I'll be stopping in to visit them this week. I wanted to note that Ms. McLaughlin and I met with Jane Lipp, Kim Dockery, and several members of the community groups this week to talk about coordinating mental health services for students and families. We all recognize that there is a great need in the community, and that we can do more by working together. So that was kind of a first step, I think, in what is going to be a wonderful coordination effort. Onto sports. Congratulations to the Oakden Girls Cross Country Team. They won the conference, region, and state championship for the second year in a row. And congratulations to Marshall High School freshman Heather Holt, who won the girls' 5A state cross-country championship as well. Thank you.
Mr. McElveen?
Pass.
Ms. Hines?
Yes, thank you. Along with Harris Latif and our Chairwoman, Tammy Dernak Kofax, and Dan Stork, I was at the FCCPTA Emerging Minority Leaders Conference on November 8th, last Saturday morning, and I wanted to thank the FCCPTA for putting that together. I think it was their third or fourth year doing that, and it seems to get bigger and better-attended every year. If I try to name all the FCPS staff who were there doing a wonderful job, I'll forget somebody, so I won't try to do that right now. But really, virtually the whole morning were presentations from FCPS staff about all the work that is going on in FCPS to support families who, families of minority students of our potentially underserved communities, to make sure that we are serving them better, and the work continues. On, I want to thank the Aldrin Elementary School PTA for inviting me out to their meeting last week. It's a wonderful school and a wonderful PTA. We have some issues there this year with class size, something that I'm hearing in a lot of places. And we all are working as hard as we can to see that that gets better in the future. I want to thank FCFT for inviting me to, I don't know if Mr. Greenberg is still here, but for inviting me to their awards dinner on Friday night. It was a good time, I think, was had by all, and I really, I appreciate the honor. It's always good to be recognized by teachers, by the people in the field who are actually doing the work. The least we can do is try to represent them well up here. Let's see. Later this week, I will join most of my colleagues at the Virginia School Boards Association Conference in Williamsburg. On Sunday, November 23rd, if you can come out, if you live in Vienna, come out to the Vienna Turkey Trot early in the morning at the Firehouse. It's very cold, but it's fun. It's a great morning. And I will be, Friday, November 28th, if you're a Restonian, come out to the Reston Holiday Parade at the Reston Town Center. I will be in the parade remarkably. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Ms. Smith?
Pass.
Mr. Velkoff? Ms. McLaughlin?
At first, just wanted to bring attention to my colleagues and to the community about the CDC that is here this week in Fairfax County, working with both Fairfax County Public Schools and county government on what is called an EPI aid. And they are here to help us look at the recent suicides that Fairfax County has experienced, both throughout the county and also in certain high schools in particular. And so, tonight, tomorrow, and the next night, Fairfax County has reached out to select communities to invite them to focus group meetings so that the CDC can interact with our public and get a better handle on risk factors associated with teen suicide. So I want to thank again Dr. Dockery and Dr. Marian Panarelli, who have worked so closely with county public health and Virginia Department of Public Health that enabled us to bring in the CDC, and hopefully, through their work, they will help us to identify what we can do going forward as a school system and as a county in our post-vention work. So I'm very thankful for that. I know the weather's a bit cold, but I really do hope we will see a strong turnout from our community for those important meetings. There will be a debrief on Friday with the team that's been working on this issue, just as they do a wrap-up of just being here for the week. And then there will be a report that will be forthcoming. I will be happy to share with my colleagues a link to a report that was done based on some studies out of Delaware as well, just to give you a sample idea of what that may look like. I also want to just echo what Ms. Schultz mentioned earlier about the Robinson Secondary School Town Hall that she and I did this week. We were able to meet for an hour with the leadership class, where there was almost 70 students, where we talked a lot about student stress and homework loads and other things that may impact student sleep. And we gave them a survey, about six questions, and so we're getting those responses tabulated, and we'll definitely share that with you. But we'll also be visiting a number of other high schools that she and I share in our districts and continue to offer that survey. That, too, I will pass along to all of you, and would welcome your insights if there's other questions we should be asking. But I figure it's just a start to really get the students' impressions and their voice. And I also want to express my appreciation for Dr. Garza coming out to Region Four. Again, I share with Ms. Schultz for the listening tour. It was a very strong turnout, and I think in listening to the community that was there, more than anything, they appreciated the opportunity to really be able to speak directly to our superintendent and express their thoughts and concerns about our school system. Also, to Mr. McElveen, who has been working on a effort on human sex trafficking, the campaign against it, and one of our community citizens, Just Ask Virginia. She, it was started by, the Virginia chapter, by a young lady in West Springfield High School. And so, both Ms. Strauss and I met with them, and I would encourage my colleagues to also meet with them. And I know Mr. McElveen's going to probably speak more to all of us as a Board about that, but it's a very serious issue, and so I appreciate the work that Fairfax County Schools is doing, but also that Mr. McElveen's outreach with this group is to be valued, and I think will be important. And then finally, just to echo my appreciation as well to FCFT and President, Mr. Steve Greenberg, for honoring me on Friday evening, along with many others. It was appreciated, and certainly, knowing that we do our best to represent our teachers and our employees, it continues to be a very important focal point of the work we do. And yes, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Mr. Stork?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would echo Ms. McLaughlin's comments about FCFT, and appreciate Steve Greenberg and the executive committees honoring of me and many other Board members, and really, the fine work that they've done in partnership with us to make this school system much better, and frankly, to make a real difference in the lives of teachers. I think this, we're off to a great start this year because of the ability for all of us to work together and come up with solutions that work well, even if they're not ideal. So again, it's most appreciated. And I also wanted to add my really commendations and thanks to Debbie Co-Patrick and the Fairfax County Council of PTAs and the Emergency Emerging Minority Leaders Conference that they had. Excellent attendance, largest attendance I've seen, and clearly one that they continue to build on. I think it's one that serves us all very, very well in this county. The last item I wanted to mention is one of really great sadness, but also one of true celebration. This past Saturday, West Potomac High School, Hannah Graham, and a celebration of life of Hannah Graham was held this past Saturday. Those of you who may remember, Hannah Graham was the University of Virginia student that was abducted and then later found murdered. And she is a West Potomac graduate, and frankly, one of West Potomac's finest graduates. And we had an opportunity this past Saturday, and I thank Mr. Moon and Mr. McElveen for attending. We, really, it was truly a celebration of her life, and her life was one of great joy, I think, and pleasure, not only about, you know, kind of being who she wanted to be and who she was wanting to become, but also one that coolly enjoyed other people and challenging them and teasing and having fun with them, all the kinds of things that we look for and expect our students to be part of, to be well-rounded and to be growing and developing as, and to find young adults, and that she was. She was a major member of the student body, a particular band, I know, and ski team, and some other activities were a clear part of what she enjoyed doing. But I particularly wanted to thank some individuals who truly went above and beyond. And I'll start first and foremost with the Principal Alex Case of West Potomac High School, the Director of Student Activities, Alman Helmick, and he has a number of staff people that were huge in kind of organizing this. Just to give you a sense of the scale, there were almost 1,000 people that were there, and they had, not only filled the auditorium, and the West Potomac Band played wonderfully. They had food for all of us afterwards, but it was just incredibly well-done. Steve Rice was the director of the band, and Steve is an institution at West Potomac High School, for those of you who may not know. Just like Ernest Johnson, who conducted the choir here today, is also one of the reasons why West Potomac has one of the finest band and choirs in the state. They coolly organized and really conducted themselves in a ceremony that was truly honoring Hannah in as many ways as we possibly can. Her parents spoke, both spoke very moodily and lovingly, and gave us a sense of the tragedy and difficulty that it's caused them, but coolly, their commitment to find a way to move on. I wanted to also thank Reverend Tucker Bowerfeind, who was the kind of the emcee, the person who kind of conducted the celebration. He did a wonderful job, and he's also a major part of our community. Something very special is Fort Hunt Community is truly a unique community within Fairfax County. And those of you who have heard about Fort Hunt High School and how that was such a powerful symbol of the school, and how the school community still hasn't really forgotten about it, that's indicative of how strong the ties and the relationships are there. So to have one of our own to suffer this kind of harm and hurt coolly brought us together, but can never really be, can really replace her, for sure. Last, but absolutely not least, there are a number of FCPS, Fairfax County employees, who truly went above and beyond, and I'm going to take another minute just because it's just, we have such an incredible staff here. And when people ask for something like this, they follow through. They make sure that it's their business to make sure it gets well-done. I'll start with Bill Chapman, the School Safety and Security Officer. Kevin McDonald is the Manager of Logistical Services. Rick Bell, Field Information Systems. He's the tech, the guy who put together the live feeds, which were important to make sure that everything worked well. Duane McMillan, the Field Services Senior Tech. Paul Oco Oday, who's a multimedia tech. Tom Montgomery, the Field Services Tech. Andrew Redman, Field Services Tech. Lieutenant Brian Holland, who, the FCPD, excuse me, he's our school liaison officer, played a central role in this. Nan Peck, who's the Edison Support Center. They repaired some chairs and helped us to really fix up the place a little bit, because there were some things that still needed to be done. And I would also remind you of Gran Elfman and Mike Amaco. Amaco, from Information Technology, also helped to make some other repairs. But all of them came together, our system came together, to truly help honor Hannah in absolutely the way that she should be honored, which was first-rate. And we can't replace her, but we can sure let her and her parents know how much we cared and how much we are deeply saddened by her loss. So, thank you. So, thank you.
Ms. Strauss.
Thank you for all that information about Hannah. I know how important that is, and it is wonderful how our staff steps up.
It is.
I know. I've seen that before, so thank you for taking the time to thank them. I, too, was at the TJ ribbon cutting. It was very exciting. I think Mr. Moon and I, we started on the visioning for this in 2009, long time ago. Very, very exciting to finally see the first piece of it delivered, absolutely beautiful. I want to thank the Kent Gardens First Graders on Friday. I was able to go and talk to 100 of them on local government and school board. It was lots of fun. I attended the wonderful art show of our own FCPS art teachers and original compositions by our music teachers at the Lorton Workhouse Gallery. It was beautiful. And if you notice at your place, I've left you with a lot of material. And on the one hand, we are all very, very concerned about school readiness, quality early childhood, good services for our youngest children so as they're ready when they come to school and kindergarten, and clearly short on funds, and we're going to have to stretch every penny as best we can. So this morning, we had a large collaborative meeting that included our home visiting services for very young mothers and infants and toddlers at risk. It also included the school readiness team. We had all of our nonprofits there, UCM, Cornerstone, Northern Virginia Family Services, obviously Office for Children, all of those folks, as well as regional and state people. And at your place, I have shared with you, this, by the way, is how high-risk, very young mothers, infants, and toddlers, how they are triaged through the Health Department and healthy families, to provide intensive services for our most fragile, young, very young children. And also shows you healthy families, which is a piece of that, that helps to prevent child abuse. The latest on Fairfax Futures, which again is school readiness, and two very interesting examples of what's being shared with our families, English, Spanish, many other languages. And the faith community was also there, and I reminded them, they're all invited to our breakfast. So it is, it's a wonderful example of many different service providers that come together to stretch our resources, try to make sure that we are doing everything that we can to meet the needs of the whole range of our young children, so they're ready when they come to school. It's also an opportunity for us to talk about legislative initiatives and to make sure that we are all coordinated and doing the best that we can. So incredible amount of excellent, excellent staff work, who really work very well together. So it was very exciting.
Thank you. Ms. Evans.
Thank you. I, too, was very pleased to be able to go to the premiere of Sleepless in America. I hope everybody can watch that on November 30th. And in particular, we were very well-represented in this documentary by everyone in FCPS who was a part of it, but particularly the two students who were featured there, Erin Cooper and Amin Al-Dali, they just did a terrific job, and I was so pleased that they could come to the premiere with their parents, as well as Mr. Latif. It was, it was great to be able to share that with them, and I hope everybody can take the time to see the documentary. I also was at the TJ ribbon cutting, which was magnificent, and I guess my favorite part of it was talking to the students about their work in the lab and just seeing the, you know, hearing the enthusiasm for the projects that they were working on in all these different realms of the sciences. So that was, that was really quite exciting. I also participated, but I didn't participate in, I went by the Mason Crest Fund Run on Friday, and one of the interesting features of this was that it celebrated the 42 countries from which the students come. And so they, they had the flags of their, their home countries, and they ran through, they ran through their countries, and it was, anyway, it was a very great event, and it celebrated the diversity of that school. So I was very pleased to be a part of that. I did not run, however. I, too, was very honored to be at the Friday night FCFT award ceremony. I very much appreciate Mr. Greenberg and the partnership of FCFT, and that was quite a lovely event. This week, I plan to be at the Stewart PTSA with Region Two Assistant Superintendent Fabio Zuluaga. We're going to be talking about a number of things at Stewart High School, and I hope everyone in that, that high school and for that matter in the pyramid can attend on Wednesday night. And last but not least, I'm looking forward to going, to attending the VSBA next week. No, this week.
This week.
It's this week. We're going this week. Yeah, I'm just only going to be able to go for one day, but I'm sure I always get a lot out of that, and so I look forward to that, and happy Thanksgiving to all of you.
Ms. Schultz.
So I was very honored to share Veterans Day with the Sangster community. You bring me to tears every single Veterans Day. I did get in my car and try to speed limit drive to Orange Hunt Elementary, but guys, just have, you're so close, you're 1.4 miles apart, but I just can't get to them both. But kudos on the tremendous effort that you all put into a very, very special program. Your students learn a lot. I want to thank Dr. Garza and everyone who came for the Region Four Listening Tour to Robinson, extremely well-attended, including by quite a number of my colleagues. I was very impressed. And by the number of employees, in addition to parents, who came and presented in a very articulate and very cogent way, both their observations and their concerns, and we look forward to being responsive to those. The Superintendent Business Roundtable Luncheon was this week, and with a number of prime business leaders, real estate firms, developers, the opportunity to sit down with Dr. Garza, Ms. Dernak-Kofax and I had lunch with our Edison Culinary Students, truly phenomenal. And for anybody looking for a source for pies or bread for Thanksgiving, hint, hint, go to the Edison website. I was pleased to be a judge for the DECA District Level Competition that was held at Lake Braddock, hosted at Lake Braddock. That was a phenomenal event. I got to interview and meet with students from around the region and score them. I didn't let on who I was, so I'm not quite sure if they realized, and I'm proud to say that my son placed second in marketing at districts. FCFT, what a phenomenal evening. Thank you. I'm honored to have received one of the President's Awards. It's a beautiful evening. I get to share with my family and with my colleagues, who are there for the honors, and just have some collegial opportunities with, with teachers. I want to acknowledge, because he's still sitting here, Michael Marrow is a Centerville High School student and one of the students in my district. I'm very pleased that he's the SAC president. I have a feeling we're going to be seeing more of him in the future, so good luck to him as he leads on this year, this big adventure. I had a tremendous, probably one of the most wonderful honors. I attended a wedding of one of our teachers, and she's a very special teacher. In fact, she's not only a gem, she's now a pearl, Mrs. Mary Pearl, Mrs. Mary Pearl. But the most wonderful thing during the wedding was the opportunity to spend with a lot of other teachers. And it was just, it was one of the most special nights I've had in a long time, and I thank you for that. My husband and I had a wonderful time. And I am looking forward to heading off to VSBA to Williamsburg. I do want to make a note, because it sounds like we're all going on a boondoggle. By state law, we are required, as board members in the Commonwealth of Virginia, to have continuing professional engagement, you know, that's akin to continuing professional education that educators have. So this is something that we're required by state law to do. We do work hard there, and we all go to lots of very diverse trainings and hopefully come back and share that with each other so that we, we all benefit and we're better board members for it. So it's not a boondoggle, it's required. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. I will say, as many of my colleagues said, I've attended some events with some of you. I do appreciate the FCCPTA, the Minor, Minority, my mouth is not working today, the Emerging Minority Leadership Conference. There was a great turnout, there was a lot of energy and a lot of excitement, and I've seen the program grow, and I'm all excited about all the ideas that have come out of it. I did go with Ms. Schultz to the BCAC Luncheon, that was with developers and realtors, and they shared with us their desire to partner with us on many levels, and I am excited about that and look forward to those partnerships. And also kudos to Edison's Culinary Academy, who served a delicious lunch in a most professional manner. Thank you for that. Thank you also to all the legislators who came to our briefing to talk, as they heard about our needs and what our priorities are. I hope they will take that information with them down to Richmond. I was also part of the TJ ribbon cutting. Some of the things that those children are able to do, including quantum physics and growing their own cells, was beyond my comprehension what is going on there, but it's amazing things that are going on there, I will say that for certain. Thank you, too, to FCFT and Mr. Greenberg for a lovely evening the other evening. Last week, after we passed our resolution, so the students were able to dedicate the Spirit Shop to in Mr. Tremaine's honor at Hayfield Secondary. There was a lovely program that evening that celebrated his life, and all members of the student body were involved, and it was, it was a wonderful, heartwarming evening to celebrate Mr. Tremaine even further. And finally, on this Friday, Virginia Secretary of Education Anne Holton will be visiting two schools in our area. They will be Hypl Valley Elementary School and Whitman Middle School, and I will be accompanying her with Delegate Sereville to see those schools. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.
The debriefer is, ah, we already knew.